Thursday, February 25th to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
House, Self, White.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. Okay, we're going to ask for public comment. I have a number of slips. First, public comment is for items not on the agenda, so not budget-related. And then, I know, I see others that say "public comment," but then they list something related to the budget. So, if there's something that is not on today's agenda, I think I saw Nikolai Lambert that I think that is a part of the agenda on the budget. Teri Tyler.
On the budget?
Okay. John Turner, that's definitely on the budget. And George Green, was that public on the budget? Okay. So what we're going to do is have a presentation from our staff, and then we'll open it up for questions and then public comment. Thank you. Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Today is the first budget workshop of what I expect will be many over the next four months to talk about both this year and next year in terms of the city's financial condition and our budget. I can tell you that this is probably the most challenging fiscal environment that this city has faced in, oh, 50, 60 years. It's a very, very difficult environment. And from a staff standpoint, we have been struggling. We struggled last year, as you know, to balance the budget. And over the last several months, as our revenues have continued to deteriorate, the scope of the problem has gotten much worse. And we're not unique in this regard. I noted yesterday in the, one of the local newspapers, it had that the school district was facing a $6 million deficit, the county is facing a $40 million deficit, and they reported our deficit at approximately $9 million. And as I talk with my colleagues throughout the state and really throughout the nation, we're in a very, very difficult time for state and local government, just unprecedented revenue drops. And one thing to remember is that we're not like the federal government. The federal government can just spend money and don't have, doesn't have to worry about revenues. In our case, we have to balance the budget every year. And we're facing a very, very challenging time. The purpose of today is to, one, define the problem, define the problem for this year, the current fiscal year, and also for next year. And to give you our preliminary feelings about what it's going to take to try and deal with the problem. But these are very serious times. We are facing choices that none of us like to make. And the options we're looking at are, you know, we take no joy in them. And we're, as you see the data, in some cases, the numbers just don't work. And no matter how we try, we're either going to have, we're going to have to come up with some creative solutions, and it'll probably have major impacts on services to the community. But today's purpose is to kind of define the problem, go over it, let you kick the tires. I encourage you to ask questions as we go, because we want you to understand it. I'm glad to see that this is probably for a beginning budget session, it's good to see that we have a lot of folks here, because the better people understand this, then the more they can help us reach constructive solutions. In terms of the schedule for today, you want to go to the next page, Bob? We're going to talk first, kind of a City Budget 101. How is the city's budget set up? What's our financial structure? We're going to focus primarily on the city's general fund, because that's where we have our greatest area of stress. We're going to talk about our current fiscal year, part of what we weren't able to talk about yesterday, or, excuse me, on Tuesday, in terms of the continued revenue deterioration, define what the problem is and what we're trying to do to stem the problem. Focus a lot on next year, because next year's problem is much worse in terms of defining it. And then, again, our initial balancing strategy for next year. And then, turn it open to question. Again, I encourage you to ask questions as we go along. So I'm going to ask Bob Samario, our Finance Director, to start out and kind of go through the first four sections, and then I'll deal with section number five.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Bob Samario, Entrim Finance Director. And I've got about a 30 to 40-minute presentation, somewhere in the order of 50, 60 slides, before we turn it over back to Mr. Armstrong. And again, as Mr. Armstrong indicated, we'll sort of start with Budget 101. And we wanted to show, really, what we consider the three major categories of funds, because we do get a lot of questions or comments about, in terms of trying to solve this current problem we're in, why can't we use monies from our enterprise funds or from the redevelopment agency? And then similarly, we get questions or comments about, why is it that we're spending money to renovate in our airport, airline terminal, when we have such a problem with our general fund? So this is, the next couple of slides really speaks to sort of answering those questions and comments. First, we have a general fund, that's, we only have one of those, and it's what most people kind of think about when they think about a city. It's really the activities that are accounted for within our general fund. It's for police, fire, recreation, library services. The important thing here for people to know is that it's primarily funded from tax revenues. That's sort of the nature of a general fund for a local government. It does have other revenues, but primarily it's taxes. It could be different for, depending on the community. In some cases, it's property taxes are the number-one revenue source. In other communities, it could be sales taxes, depending on whether they're a tourist-based city or more of a bedroom community. Then we have our enterprise funds, and we have a number of those. I think we have seven. The interesting thing or important thing here is that they are, unlike the general fund, they're primarily funded from user fees or rates. They don't receive tax support. They're not, they don't have the ability to levy a tax. Everything they collect is through the rates, and those rates are designed to recover all their costs, including capital. And then we have special revenue funds. I mentioned the redevelopment agency. Essentially, that's a special revenue fund, and those monies are restricted for a specific purpose. Another example is our community development block grant fund, which is used, as you know, for some of our rehab loan programs, for neighborhood improvements and the like. And just wanted to speak to, as I said, some of the restrictions on the use of enterprise fund revenues. We are allowed to charge enterprise funds for what we call overhead or administrative charges. As you know, all of our administrative departments are within the general fund. They're not really sparse-doubt among the various enterprise or special revenue funds. But because they're in one place, we have to recognize that we provide services that benefit all those other funds, and so we charge them for those services. And we do that through the overhead. And it is a revenue that is brought into the general fund. And we are, again, allowed to do this, but we have certain restrictions. We can't just charge them sort of unreasonably for things that are not appropriate. And we are really subject to federal regulations and audit. When we put together our cost allocation plan that determines the overhead charges to the various funds, it's subject to federal regulations. It's OMB Circular AA87, if you're interested. So, you know, we have to follow those guidelines, and we are also audited every year, and they look at those things to make sure we're not overcharging enterprise funds. We are also allowed to make loans between this general fund and other funds, including enterprise funds. As you know, we have several of them outstanding right now. The only restrictions are that if, it's a policy decision whether we charge interest or not, but if we do charge interest, the interest rate should be fair and reasonable. We can't charge them 20% interest on a loan. That would be essentially unallowable. And then, the other big important thing, as I sort of alluded to, is that the revenues within those funds are restricted for the purposes for which they were collected. And I mentioned enterprise funds. We have our airport that were, FAA says, you know, because of all the grant monies they receive from the AA, we can't really take those reserves or monies that they receive. Our city charter dictates that revenues within our waterfront are restricted to that fund. Bond covenants affect sort of the revenues, the revenue coverages within our various enterprise funds. So we start sort of looking to take some of those monies, we get in trouble in that regard. And then where it doesn't really apply in these areas, we always kind of go back to, you know, what's, could we really take money just by raising rates in an enterprise fund and siphoning the money back to the general fund? We would probably come into Prop 218 issues. And again, same with special revenue funds. Those are really restricted by federal, state, or local law or grant conditions. And we've talked about this before, there are exceptions. We have a couple of enterprise funds that are created primarily for accounting purposes. It's just for us to better track the costs of those services so we can establish what those fees should be, because they're designed to recover 100% of their costs. And two examples of them, as I mentioned, is the downtown parking fund and our golf fund. Those, again, are creatures of, really, just for accounting purposes. Since we could theoretically consolidate those operations within the general fund, it doesn't really make sense from an accounting perspective. And then our internal service funds. Those are created primarily to capture sort of costs that are central to the city, that we can better allocate those costs through charges to the various funds. So moving on to the sources and uses of funds, looking first at our revenues, and we look, this is, we've seen this before. For this current fiscal year, our revenue budget is about $105 million. And as you can see, the largest portion of our revenues, and I alluded to this before, is in the form of taxes. And you can see the breakdown of our tax revenues. Our largest tax revenue is property taxes. It used to be sales tax when I first got here, but for a number of reasons, it's sort of flipped around. Sales tax is at $17.1 million, property tax is at $23.4 million. And then you can see our other two larger revenue sources, bed tax, or we call TOT, $11.3 million. And then our utility users' tax really is double that, but half of it goes through our streets program. Our inter-fund charges, about half of that, or 8%, is the overhead. I mentioned the charges from the administrative functions to enterprise funds. The balance relates to two pieces primarily. First is, are the engineering work order charges to capital projects and enterprise funds from our Public Works Department and Engineering Division? They generate about $4 million in revenues for those services. And then we also have another component in there for the services provided by the fire department to the airport, that's the ARF charges. So that's about $3 or $4 million of memory serves. And then I wanted to point out that we do charge for some of our services to the public, primarily in recreation, our library departments, community development, and the like. But really, a small piece of our overall revenue picture, less than 10%, comes from fees and charges. So when we're looking to sort of deal with some of these challenges, we can raise fees, and we try to do that every year, sort of to keep up with the cost of services, but it's not a big chunk. So we really can't raise it to make a big difference in our deficit. And oftentimes, your work's counter, on the opposite, because you raise fees and you lose participation. So looking at our key revenues, and we're going to start with sales taxes. This is how our sales tax revenues are allocated in the county. So these are countywide sort of percentages. And as you know, in the county of Santa Barbara, our tax rate, sales tax rate is 8 and 3/4 cents. And you can see that the state gets the vast majority of the sales tax dollars at about 68% or the 6 cents. Cities on the left, you can see, get 1 cent. That's the Bradley Burns constitutionally-protected revenue portion. That's 1 cent on the, of the 8 and 3/4 cents. And then you can see where the rest of it goes. To the far right, the Measure A, really Measure D, Measure A, that's the half-cent sales tax for regional projects and local transportation and street improvement projects. Toward the top, you can see the public safety, that's split between fire and police, there's a half cent. And that's sort of money that was given to local governments a number of years ago, sort of as a, ostensibly to repay us for the fact that they took a lot of our money through the ERAF shift back in their mid-'90s. Looking at sales tax historically, and I know some of you have seen this before, but just to kind of go over for the benefit of the public primarily, this is a trend starting back from 1997 to the current projections, or you can see the far right is what we're projecting this year. But as you can see, back from '97 to 2001 roughly, we had a 6.1% average growth. And if you look at the individual bars, you can see that it was pretty steady. It wasn't where one year was big and one year was low. It's pretty steady increase in those years. And, you know, if you would have asked me about five, six months ago, what was our average growth in that period, I would have said more in the order of 4% or 5%. And so 6.1% is really a strong growth, and that's just that one revenue source. You can see the impacts of the recession in 2001. But then following that, we still had some reasonable growth, substantially moderated from what we saw in the prior eight or so years, or six years, down to 3.3% on average. But if you look at the individual bars, you can see a little more sporadic. In some years, it grew a little, and some years it grew a little more, which really added to our predictabilities. How do we estimate these revenues when we see such volatility, unlike in prior years? But then in 2009, we had, of course, everything fell, the cliff, we fell off the cliff in terms of the revenues. You could see a 10.6% decline. And then for this year, we're projecting an additional 6.5% decline. And effectively, what's happened, and this is a re-updated number, because now we have our recent projections in that far-right bar, we've lost about 11 years of growth. And if you were just to take the 2008 bar and assume a 3.3% growth for the two following years, we'd be close to $22 million in revenues. Instead, we're about 16.4, over $5 million swing in just two years. And that's a lot of money, you know? No way to sort of say that it's a lot of money, particularly when our expenditures don't behave in the same manner. Our expenditures are really economically inelastic, because they continue to grow. On the property tax side, you can see where each dollar collected countywide goes. So this is a countywide picture. The vast majority of the money, almost half, goes to go to schools. The county gets 27% or 27 cents. And in cities, under county, get 12 cents. And then the special districts, 11 cents, and RDAs, 5 cents. And if you were to look at just the city itself, within, you know, this is a countywide, but just within the city, the proportions change a little bit, but the city of Santa Barbara's portion is still about 11 or 12 cents. So a lot of people wonder where our money goes, and they say, well, they assume it kind of all goes to the city, but really it doesn't. So here is a similar perspective on our property tax revenues. Here you can see double-digit growth on average, and pretty steady from '97 to 2005. Wasn't even impacted by the recession in 2001. And then we see we had a sort of a, an increase, a substantial increase in the property taxes back in 2005, and that's when we received, in lieu of our VLF or our car tax revenues, an equal amount of property taxes. This is when the car tax was lower, from 2% down to 0.65%. That was a state of sort of move, but really a local revenue. And so in repayment, they gave us equal amount of property taxes. So actually, we ended up doing better, in my opinion, because the property taxes, since then have grown up 8.5%, I don't think VLF would have grown to that extent. But since then, you see an 8.5% average growth, very, very strong. And then we see that we're basically looking at a 1% decline in 2010. So, you know, not a big decline relative to sales tax or property or the others, but still, the fact that we've been seeing and are enjoying 8.5% average growth, that's a substantial turnaround. And then our transient occupancy tax revenues, our bed tax over the last 14 years, similar story, 9% growth over, between '97 and 2001, a little blip in 2002 because of the recession, but then back to strong growth, 6.2% growth on average, all the way up to 2008. And then you can see the impacts of the last couple of years. So this year, we are projecting a 9.5% decline in our bed tax in relation to last year, which was already down almost 7%. And in this case, we lost a little more than five years of growth. So moving on to expenditures, where the money goes. This is sort of breaking down by category. The biggest chunk or piece is salary and benefit costs, is 76%, very typical for a local government or a general fund. Most of the services we provide are labor-intensive, unlike our enterprise funds, which have a big component for capital maintenance and improvement. And then allocated costs, we've talked about this before, that these are the charges from those internal service funds we talked about, those that building maintenance, custodial services, information systems, those are sort of captured in individual funds, but then they allocate their costs through charges, in a sense. And thus, the general fund's portion is 9% of our total costs. And when you think about it, those are also labor costs. Those are information system staff, those are custodians and the like. So when we're looking at, how do we solve a problem and making cuts to respond to declines in revenues, we're really, again, talking about people. And I just point out the supplies and services, 8%, you know, not much we can do there. We're sort of down to the bone. We haven't seen much growth in the last 10 years in that category. It's always pretty flat. You know, it's just the typical stuff, paper, toner, you know, those kinds of things. Not a big part of our expenditure budget. Looking at it by department now, you, this is, again, the same slide, but sort of trying to isolate some of the components or functions. You can see that public safety represents 52% of the overall budget, expenditure budget, fire at 21%, and police at 31%. In total, they're about $54 million of the total expenditure pie. If you just look at the non-safety operating departments, so it doesn't include the police or fire, nor does it include administration, that represents 34% of our total budget. And then the remaining pieces are what we call administration, at $11.6 million or 12% of the overall budget. So this next sort of slides try to describe, you know, sort of juxtapose revenues and expenses that are in the department, because each department generates different levels of revenues, cost recovery, in a sense, some more than others. And just starting with the first department, Public Works, in the general fund, you can see the revenues there and the expenditures. In total, they generate $6 million per year. And I mean, we talked about that before, primarily it's engineering work orders, that those are services to enterprise funds for capital projects. Their expenditures are $6.6 million. So they essentially recover 90.5% of their costs through fees, revenues. Sort of the, on the flip side, if you look at the police department, and this is not a criticism, this is just the nature of police departments, that they're not designed to recover costs. They're designed to, basically, provide public safety services. But you can see their expenditure budget is about $33 million, and they generate about $4.3 million in revenues. Most of that is, are the parking violations that they generate. But their recovery rate is 15.5%. And if you just sort of look at the operating departments, you can see that engineering, for sure, is the largest, but all the rest are under 50%, with the exception of community development. And you know, over the last several years, we've been trying to raise those fees to better capture those costs, particularly in the planning. We've always been fully recovered in building, but planning is where, area where we've been kind of focusing more on trying to get more of those costs recovered. Here are the administrative departments. You can see they're typically a little higher, and that's because of the overhead. Most of the services, generally speaking, about half of what we do in administration in the general fund benefits enterprise funds, so we allocate them out accordingly. Individual ones are a little higher than that, and some are lower than that. And you can see the full spectrum of the percentages recovered. Now, the next slide, if you just take the difference between those revenues and expenses per department, this is what you end up with. So this is the net cost, if you will, expenses or expenditures minus revenues by department. And it presents a different story, because when you look at just expenditures, it sort of says one thing, but if you look at it when you back out revenues that those departments generate, it tells really a different story. For example, Public Works, their budget in the general fund is $6.6 million, but their real impact to the general fund is only $627,000. That's the burden they, since placed on, on non-departmental revenues, such as taxes, to fund their services. Police is 28.5 million, that's the net cost to the general fund. And you can see the rest. Parks and Recreation, $9 million. Mayor and Council, under $400,000. The library, $3 million. Fire, $17.2 million, and so forth. And the total of all this is really what I consider the subsidy. These net costs are, have to be funded or subsidized from our tax revenues and other non-departmental revenues, such as overhead and interest income. And I wanted to sort of present this bar chart in a, on a pie chart format, to show the proportions of that subsidy. So for example, public safety, they represent 69% of the overall subsidy from non-departmental, or essentially tax revenues. Administration, 7%. And then non-safety operating departments, 24%. So a different story when you just look at expenditures only than when you factor in the revenues. And I kind of jokingly say, you know, we have a $9 million problem next year. If we were getting rid of all of administration, we'd still be $4 million short.
So can I just rephrase it? So I understand that. This is saying that for every dollar of tax money coming into the city's general fund, the percentage is there, that's how it goes back out. So 69% of every dollar that comes in from the taxpayers go to public safety. Would that be a correct statement?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
That's a better way to say it, in fact. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to also acknowledge the students and headmaster from Anacapa School that's here. So you can help us, I'm sure, as we move along. Thank.
And I just want to reiterate, that this is the crux of the problem, because as you saw on the prior slides, the area where we're having our biggest revenue declines is in tax revenues. And 70% or close to 70% of those tax revenues go to public safety. And it just makes it much more difficult to try and balance this thing when you see it this way.
Correct. And it's not, it's just the nature of the beast. It's not a, just the way it works, the way the money's allocated.
Well, this is typical of any city government, that most funding goes to public safety. Okay. Thank you.
So let's look at our general fund reserves. This first slide just kind of talks about what our policy reserve requirements are. There's a resolution that was adopted back in 1995. It happens to be 95-156. Don't know why I remember that. But it provides that we have a capital reserve, a fixed amount of $1 million, that we also have a disaster reserve, and it's for real big disasters, major earthquakes, where we're seeing not only our costs go up, but also loss of revenues when people are just not showing up anymore and eating at our restaurants or coming to our hotels. And then we have a budgetary reserve, really to deal with economic swings, if you will, and that's established at 10%. And you can see, they are a percentage of the operating budgets, so they will move or change as our operating budget changes. And in fact, if you look at the red line, you can see in 2004, the reserve requirements were $22.8 million, but they went up to $24.9 in 2009, because our budget grew over that period of time. You can see that it actually went down from 2008 to 2009 for the first time since I've been here, 15 years ago, when I got here, almost. But we did, it's because we were reducing staff in response to the economic downturn. So you can see what the dollar amounts here are for our capital reserve. It's a million dollars fully-funded reserve. We have our disaster reserves, which are also fully funded, that's the 15%. And then our budgetary reserves from 2004 to 2009. And what you can easily see is that in 2004, we actually had reserves above what our policy said we were supposed to have. We had a surplus, if you will, of $4.7 million. At the end of last fiscal year, June 30, 2009, audited numbers, our reserves totaled $17.9 million, which meant that we were actually about $9.1 million below what our policy said we should have. So just not to forget, you know, our partners in the other funds, our enterprise funds, just wanted to spend a few minutes talking about enterprise funds, kind of where they're at. We didn't spend, we didn't get a chance to talk about enterprise funds, but this past Tuesday, as part of a media report, so is that we kind of just talk, just briefly about each one. We do have people, department heads from the various enterprise funds to answer any more specific questions, but I'll just cover them briefly. So our water, wastewater, and slotted waste funds, I've combined them, because those are, those are utility funds. And those revenues, generally speaking, almost, I mean, almost exclusively are not affected by the economy. Those revenues are rate-driven, not economic, or economically-driven. They raise rates periodically to cover their cost of services, and people always need water, always needs wastewater services and trash services. And as I sort of alluded to, they do have a long-term approach when they set the rates. They don't, they don't try to wait three years and then jack them up 3, 8, 9%. They try to do it periodically every year to keep up with the cost of the local services, not just for operating costs, but for capital as well, and they are very capital-intensive. Our downtown parking fund, last year, they saw a $200,000 decline in revenues, the impacts of the economy presumably. But actually, this year, they're holding steady. Their hourly parking, which is really their biggest revenue last year, was $4.3 million. This year, they're expecting $4.3 million, and next year, they're projecting $4.3 million. The only impact they're really seeing is in the interest income. We're all seeing that, just because of declining interest rates. In the airport, they have been impacted. They budgeted this year an 8.5% drop in passenger counts, and that's about what they're seeing, maybe a little less than that. So they're really on track on this year's budget, based on what they projected. Next year, or this year, I'm sorry, this should be fiscal 2011, they're expected to be flat. So they're not seeing, they're expecting to see any additional declines, if any, it's going to be fairly nominal. In the waterfront fund, what we saw last year, the really only impact they saw last year was in the slip transfer fees, and that was the first half of the year. But the second half recovered, so they came pretty close to being budgeted last year. And this year, they're almost right back on track. They are seeing this year the decline in their lease revenues. Those are all the facilities, restaurants, and those kinds of things that, where they pay a portion of their revenues, or either a fixed amount or based on grocery receipts. And we are seeing this year a 1% to 2% decline. And you can see that, you know, there are five restaurants who represent about 50% of total lease revenues. But next year...
Excuse me, is that from vacancy rates or vacancies in the harbor?
I think it's primarily just, the sales are down in the various restaurants and the facilities out there. People aren't, no.
Thank you very much.
But next year, they are, they're expecting to, next year, they are expecting a 5% decline in those lease revenues.
We're just giving some advice to a council member from Los Angeles, and that's why...
He was just saying goodbye, that's all.
He said, "Thank you for our help."
Wasn't about the budget.
Okay. Moving on to the golf fund. You know, this is one of those funds where I think has been the most impacted, not because of the economy alone, but because they have been working on planning and planning these major capital improvements to the golf course over the last, I don't know, five to ten years. And unfortunately, it just happened to coincide lineup right when the economy started to hit us. So in two thousand and ten, they've been seeing, they have experienced so far, a twenty-one point four percent decline in revenue, about a seventeen or eighteen percent decline in rounds. Hard to say how much is that associated to the construction versus the economy. They're kind of assuming five to six percent is the economy, and the rest is just the construction. So they are expecting that revenues would come back fairly strong once construction is over, which is the next month or two. For next year, they're assuming that we're going to back to normal play, or the construction impacts are going to go away, but they're going to expect an additional five to six percent impact, just because of the economy. That's an assumption they're making. Hopefully, it'll do better than that. And to kind of offset that, they are proposing higher-than-average increases to their fees. They typically do one or two-dollar fee increases per year. Next year, I think they're looking at more of a three-dollar range, maybe even four. But that's going to help offset those lost revenues. So defining the problem, we're going to start with two thousand and ten, because we still have some unresolved issues this year. When we adopted the budget, and this is sort of review for you, but when we adopted the budget this year, we knew almost immediately, on the day we were adopting, that we had a problem. We saw some data in June, we adopted a budget for sales taxes that indicated that we were already behind the curve, and it only got worse from there. In November, we came to council to recommend some adjustments to our revenues, downward adjustments totaling two point five million dollars. And so our amended budget officially right now, on the books, is seventy-three point four million dollars. And this is just for non-departmental revenues, so it's just the taxes and interest income and overhead. And as you recall, may recall, in November, we took some measures to close that two point five million dollar gap. We kept approximately twenty positions vacant and unfilled, and reduced the budget accordingly. Typically, we don't do that, but we actually lowered every department's budget that had vacancies by those dollar amounts. Saved us one point three million dollars, or will save us one point three million dollars by the end of the year. We also used about a half million dollars, or exactly half million dollars, from our contingency account. We used to call that our appropriate reserve, but it's really a contingency appropriated amount. We also rebated three hundred thousand dollars from our self-insurance fund. Those are the workers' comp premiums. Essentially, we've overpaid over the last five or six years, and those are rebates from our workers' comp program. We also transferred a hundred thousand dollars from our street sweeping fund. That fund is primarily funded from parking violations, and it was just a choice we made to credit that fund, to fund that program. And they've been generating, they have generated excess revenues and therefore reserves, and so this is just pulling some of those monies out of there. And then lastly, we rebated about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from our ICS funds.
Can you say what ICS is, please?
I'm sorry. Internal, intercity services are internal service funds, so that's information systems, motor pool, and those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Some of the impacts of those changes that we implemented in November. In Parks and Recreation, there are four full-time positions that are being held vacant, valued at two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. The impact is the closure of four park restrooms, reduced maintenance at the east Cabrio Parkway, and then increased administrative burden. They basically are without a business manager, so obviously, the impacts are administrative staff for those functions. In the library, there are three full-time positions that are vacant. They've been actually vacant from the beginning of the year, so it didn't create any new impacts. So no reduction in hours of service at this point. But essentially, internal services are reduced, and the daily functions are going to be delayed. In the police department, there are eleven positions total that are vacant, or were at the beginning of the year, and nine of those are sworn. And so we estimated that we'd save by December thirty-first about five hundred thousand dollars because of the fact that those positions were vacant, and we didn't send people to the academy until January. No impact on the number of officers, quote, "on the street," but obviously, some impacts in their back office functions and workload. And then in Public Works, two full-time positions, those are held vacant. Essentially, you know what that means, is they're not able to generate as much revenue, that ninety point five percent revenue, but we're holding those vacant because there is some savings, but the value of that is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Mrs. Smart, can I just highlight the police? You went over it really quickly, but I think this is a big issue that comes up. The savings was because the sworn positions that were vacant were vacant only until December thirty-first, and at that point, we do have people in the academy, because the council in November did authorize the police chief to continue hiring at that point. Is that correct?
That is correct. They were directed to send as many people as possible to the academy in January, and Mr. Mannix and Mr. Sanchez are here to talk about it. But in January, we weren't able to send all. There weren't enough qualified individuals, and we'll talk about this more when we get into the, what are we doing now in terms of the remaining gap. But I think they were able to send four folks to the academy.
Four.
And so I think there are still seven remaining, and I don't know, Frank wanted to speak to that.
Because the way the slide looked, it looked like that was nine sworn positions vacant for the full fiscal year, and that's not what happened.
Right, that's just for the first six months. Thank you.
Mr. White, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to know how much money is in the contingency account?
In the contingency-
We took a hundred thousand out of that, but I don't know how much is in there.
So are you referring to the five hundred thousand dollars?
Yes.
I think there was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. We took five hundred thousand dollars of that, so there's a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars remaining in there.
One fifty.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay.
So looking at our non-departmental revenues, again, primarily taxes, and just wanted to spend a little time, since we didn't cover this at mid-year, but you could see that first, we have our amended budget, so that already reflects the actions taken in November, the two and a half million dollar lowering of those numbers, if you will. And you can see that in the amended budget, what those growth assumptions were in November. For example, sales taxes, we assumed when we came to you in November that we were going to see a three percent, or realized a three percent decline in those revenues in relation to prior year. And similarly, for our bed tax, a five point six percent decline. And then our property taxes, actually, up a little, almost one percent. We now have updated estimates based on just information we received since November. Big one was the revenues we got, or data we got for sales taxes in December. We were using the State Department of Finance's estimate, which said that we'd be down about twelve percent, and instead, we're down almost seventeen percent for that quarter. So obviously, a big hit caused us sort of to reevaluate what the state was projecting for the remainder of the year, because they were assuming we're going to be flat in the following quarters, and we're thinking maybe that's not a good thing to assume. So for the next quarter, which, with the data will be coming in March, we're assuming a five percent decline. But overall, we're projecting for this year to be down six point six percent rather than three percent in relation to the prior year. And our bed tax, again, nine and a half percent decline, big numbers. Property taxes went from about a point eight percent growth, now we're assuming is a one, and this is not really an assumption per se, because a lot of this is based on data we've gotten from the county, updated information from the county. We're expecting to be down almost one percent this year. And then our utility users' tax, down two percent. So you can see that we have now a new shortfall that we have not addressed yet. We have yet, at least, and we'll talk about how we plan to address, or will be addressing that, but since November, an additional two point three million dollars. So if you think about it, since July one, based on data we receive, we have had to lower our revenue estimates by about five million dollars from what the adopted budget So this year, really, the scope of the problem is not just the two point three million dollars in revenue shortfalls. We also have this little thing we've called, we call our budgeted year-end variance. We started budgeting this several years ago, and just for the benefit of the public who may not understand this, every year, in the good old days, if you will, we would budget four percent, five percent in sales taxes, and we got six percent. Those additional surpluses beyond will be projected, would generate reserves and all those kinds of things. But as our budget started to get tighter, it made more sense for us to try to be a little more accurate and not be so conservative of our estimates. And so it was hard for us to say where we were going to do better, which is a particular line item of revenue. We would, so we sort of said, "Well, let's just assume a certain amount of overage in total in our tax revenues." We also did the same with our expenditure side, because we always came in under budget on expenditures, because of just turnover in staff, vacancies and the like. So we always would come in million to million and a half dollars under budget in expenditures. We said, "Well, let's start planning for those and budgeting for those." And a couple years ago, we said, "Well, let's make it about two hundred percent, two hundred and a quarter percent." So really, about two, almost, you know, two point five million dollars we would budget as a year-end variance, and typically, we did okay with that. For this year, we sort of changed it. We said, "Well, let's not assume any surpluses on our revenue side, because we're obviously seeing nothing but bad news, but we could still suspect some savings on the expenditure side." So this current year budget reflects an anticipated surplus or savings on the expenditure side of almost one point four million dollars. So if you think about it, we really have to achieve then, by the end of this year, to avoid using reserves, is to make up for the two point three million dollar revenue loss just since November, and the fact that we have to achieve savings on our expenditure side of one point four million dollars. Now, you see, that's reasonable. Why is that a problem? Well, it's a problem because in November, we effectively capitalized on all those savings when we said to you, "We have all these vacancies, about twenty positions, valued at about one point four million dollars." We lowered our budget, so we essentially have already captured those savings, or a good portion of those. So now we still got to get there, get there in order to not use reserves. So really, the scope of our problem is not two point three million dollars, it's really about three point seven million dollars. And we'll talk about now how we hope to get there. Any questions? That's kind of an important point. I know, I know.
Just a wealth of good news, aren't you, there, Bob?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Geez.
All right, so actually, start with just some challenges. Few options, other than reducing wage and benefit costs, you know, when we're trying to solve this problem this year and, of course, next year. As I said, we've already capitalized on most of those savings from the vacant positions. We did that in November. And the other challenge we have is that if we're looking to take action this year with actual layoffs of positions, we really only get two months of benefit because of the, we have a sixty-day noticing requirement. So really, if we were to do it March first, it would only be effective May first. We had two months of savings. And then I mentioned that our budgetary reserves, we have one point two million dollars, which is already nine point one million, short of what the policy says are our target. And then, again, enterprise funds really aren't available to us to solve this problem. So here's how we propose and are essentially moving forward with in addressing the current year shortfall. We are holding additional positions, and it's amazing, but you think about it, you know, we're looking at, since November, new positions, new retirements, and all those things. We can expect an additional six hundred and nine thousand dollars from additional positions being held vacant. A good example is Ms. Joan Kent, who left since November. Well, those are savings we're going to be able to capitalize on. We are expecting additional salary savings this year from the police department. Again, either Frank or Cam can speak to this, but we weren't able to send all those people to the academy. There just weren't enough people who sort of met the screening process. So we still have some remaining positions, sworn positions, that we're assuming we're going to keep vacant for the remainder of the fiscal year. So it does assume that we're not going to send any more folks to the academy where we may be able to in May, that we're going to have savings and to keep them vacant all the way through June thirty, and that would generate about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in savings. And there are some non-sworn positions in those savings as well. And the next item is reducing overtime in the fire department effective March first. And what that means is, you know, engine companies have, you know, three folks, and typically, what happens if somebody's either sick or on leave, vacation, or other kind of leave, well, we fill that person with somebody else to bring them in, and they've basically worked on overtime, and we spend additional dollars, because overtime is paid more than straight time. This proposal is to say, "We're not going to do that anymore, no more overtime." So we have an engine company where they're down one. We're going to either leave it as such, or we're going to potentially have to close down stations temporarily to, because we're just trying to save the money. So again, those are going to be the sort of indirect impacts, or direct impacts of saying, "No more overtime." And now, in the Parks and Recreation Department, we have funded some capital projects over the last couple of years. I see there's a question there.
Mr. Williams has a question.
I just have a question on how that was calculated. So this is for the remainder of fiscal year, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten?
That's correct. From March first to June thirty.
So, and since we would be talking about one to three people per day, right? And that's how much per day?
Mysia, why don't you come on up? Yeah, there you go.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Andrew Dimesio, the fire chief. This was a calculated maximum savings. This would be if three firefighters were, if we were to hire a maximum of three firefighters, more than three firefighters, we would hire back on overtime. So this assumes three firefighters being off. If firefighters don't take leave, and leave being sick leave or vacation time, or are off injured, then we wouldn't see that maximum savings.
So this is assuming that all three would take the time off every day between now and the end of the year?
Councilmember Williams, that's correct.
And what's our typical experience with how many people are on leave at a given time, on vacation?
I would estimate this would be, in effect, approximately eighty-five percent of the time.
Okay, so we could calculate it like this, which is the best-case scenario of how much money we would save, or we could calculate it as eighty-five percent of that, which would be the more typical scenario by which we would, of what we would save?
It's a difficult number to hit exactly, because we can't calculate when firefighters might be injured or be sick, and sometimes it could be higher. So it will be in the vicinity of that number.
And the overtime is double time, or is it time and a half?
It's at time and a half.
So I still don't understand how we got to that, because, let's see, we got March, April, May, June, so that's a hundred and twenty days, each at about three thousand bucks a day, and then time and a half.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Excuse me, next item is our Parks and Recreation Department capital projects. These are funded from general fund revenues or reserves. Over the last couple of years, we funded some projects that have just not been completed or started, and so these monies are available in our capital projects fund, if you will, for the general fund. And so we're saying, "Well, let's stop those, and we're going to capitalize on those savings and not spend them," and that will then help toward our problem for this year. And then we are proposing the additional rebate of workers' compensation premiums. We believe that that's about all we have left this year, although we're expecting that we're going to see better-than-expected performance, again, in our self-insurance program, our workers' comp program this year. So by the end of this year, we might see additional savings that we might be able to use next year. But at this point, we're proposing, "Let's take the remainder, general fund portion of those workers' compensation rebates, and bring them into the general fund totaling six hundred thousand dollars." And then there are some miscellaneous departmental cuts, you know, all departments are impacted, but they don't relate to labor, whether it be equipment reductions and the like. Three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, but in total, we're looking at measures of two point eight million dollars. But as you can see at the note at the bottom, we're still not there. Still doesn't get us to the three point eight million dollars we need in order to avoid using reserves. And what this means is that there's a good chance, we're hoping not, but there's a possibility that we may happen to dip into that one point two million dollar reserves that we mentioned earlier. Now, if you're looking for some good news, there's just a slight good news. As you saw, in between two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, our reserve requirements actually went down because our budget was lowered. Well, we're expecting our budget to be lowered next year, and what that really does, it frees up reserves, because the required reserves go down. So it might be fully offset by some of that, don't know. But I'm just saying, there's a little bit of silver lining in that, because we can say, instead of having requiring eighteen million dollars or twenty-two million dollars reserves, it may be twenty-one million dollars reserved, because our operating budget went down, and it's all a function of what our operating budget is. I know it's a complicated concept.
So, for example, the disaster reserves, that's at fifteen percent of the budget. That's been fully funded all along.
That's correct.
Fifteen percent of a smaller bigger, of a smaller pie is less dollars. So that money that was there all along, that now is a smaller, the percentage is based on a smaller number, we could move those, it would still be fully funded at fifteen percent, but the excess dollars could go into the operating reserves. Is that what you're saying?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. It's still below policy of operating reserves, which is still an issue, but-
Right, but we still may only be nine point one million dollars below our reserve requirements, even if we use some of it by the end of this year, because of that.
Thank you.
And I can tell you, we've really struggled in this, because we pretty much asked departments to identify everything they could to save money through the rest of the fiscal year, and without doing layoffs, this was about all we could come up with, and it's still short. And, you know, it's been a real struggle, because we've had so little time now, because the revenues have dropped.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we do have a chunk of this, and a goodly chunk is, if I'm understanding correctly, is found through one-time funds. The workers' comp is a one-time, we don't, as you, I think you were saying, we don't have the opportunity to go back and do that again. And secondly, that the contingency is another fund that is one-time as well?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the rebate of workers' compensation premiums is in fact a one-time item.
The two of those would be one point one million of the two seven, two eight that The two of those would be 1.1 million of the 2.7, 2.8 that we're talking about comes out of one-time funds at this point?
Yeah. Although I will say that the appropriator reserve or the contingency, we actually budgeted the same amount next year. So that would theoretically be also available to help with our problem next year. We wanted to either use that or leave it as an additional cushion because, you know, things are sort of volatile right now. So really not technically a one-time item.
That's not a one-time. Just the...
The workers' comp rebate.
And also the capital projects.
And the capital projects.
Mr. Williams?
And the capital project was how much, if I could, I didn't...
That's the $268,722.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Well, in response to Bendy's question, I would actually ask for further nuance because year to year, we actually do accumulate more to the workers' comp reserve in good years, correct? So we could categorize that as an ongoing or a one-time depending on how much you budgeted. If we wanted to use the whole thing or the lion's share of it, it would be a one-time. But if we calculated at some level what our average amount that we received per year since workers' comp reform happened, then we could also categorize that as an ongoing.
We pretty much reduced the premiums to the departments by the annual amount we thought we would save. There may be a little bit there if we have better than safety record, but we already built that into the budget, and we'll build it into next year's budget.
Okay. So defining the problem for next year. You can see the first column of numbers is what we're estimating for this year. Those are revised estimates. And then you can see what we're estimating next year. So for example, sales tax revenues, we are assuming that next year's revenues will be flat in relation to what we see this year. So $16.4 million. And that's just, I don't want to say an assumption, it's almost a guess. We don't really know. We hear data from the state, we just sort of anecdotally what we read, and, you know, we're expecting a slow economic recovery. The only reason why I think we're saying it's flat is because we're going to be building on some pretty horrible quarters in this year and last year. So at some point, you know, when you're building on a 17% decline, it's hard to assume another 10% decline or 5% decline. We're hoping. So this is just our assumption for now, based on what we know today. Could change, you know, when we get the data in March for sales tax. For now, we're assuming it's going to be flat.
And I might add, the state budget that the governor proposed, it actually assumes, for example, that sales tax is going to go up next year, I think 4% or 5%. We just feel we've been burned so much the last two years that we, based on no other information on sales tax, we've just said assume it's going to be flat.
And similarly for bed tax, we're assuming the flat next year. We'll be building upon about a 9.5% decline this year. That's what the $10.9 million represents. So again, you know, those two sort of run in tandem. So where sales taxes typically go or where bed tax goes, actually it's vice versa because the bed tax is more of a leading indicator for us. Our property taxes next year, we're expecting a 1% decline, and that's based on, again, county information and what they expect the assessment role to be. They've seen a decline in the CPI, which is the basis upon which they establish those levies. And then our utility users tax, actually a little bit of an increase, 1%, and same with our franchise fees. Now, you'll look at the row that says other, and we've talked about this before, the big adjustment next year we're going to have to make, because we've sort of put it off for a couple of years, is the fact that as we've been lowering in our general fund, particularly the administrative departments in the general fund, those are the folks that basically provide services to enterprise funds. And so as those number of people go down and those associated costs go down, we should be adjusting the charges to enterprise funds. And so next year, since we haven't done it in a couple of years, next year is sort of our time to trudge up. We do it every couple of years. And that's about $800,000 or $700,000 of that $1.1 million. The rest of it is interest income, or almost all of it is interest income in the balance. We're still seeing continued decline in our interest rates. And, you know, we have securities we just recently sold that were paying us 5% interest. We're having to reinvest that money at 1% or 2% rate of return. So you can just imagine the impacts. And it's just continuing on and on until we see, you know, a dramatic increase in those interest rates, we won't see us even leveling off because it's like the Titanic. It's going to take a while for us, those existing securities to mature and then reinvest in a higher interest rate environment. So when you combine this current year...
Hey, Bob, don't use Titanic. Come up with something else. Give us a, give us a little hope here, dude.
All right.
Like turning the Queen Mary around. How's that?
That's much better. Thank you.
All right. What was the boat name for the Gillingham Island minnow or something like that? So our projected shortfall next year really is a combination of what we're seeing at the end of this year, $2.3 million, plus the additional amounts that I just mentioned. So really a $3.6 million revenue shortfall we're projecting next year in relation essentially to the budget this year. But that's not really the biggest part of our problem. The biggest part of our problem is on the expenditure side, ironically. We have some scheduled MOU increases that took place this year and for the remainder of the year, and then some next year. The impact of those scheduled MOU increases are $2.3 million. We are going to see additional reductions from our SES funds. We've asked them to basically reduce their budgets and their charges to us. So those are essentially rebates, but they're presumably ongoing. But then the one-time measures we implemented in 2010, and part of that, as you know, in the adopted budget, we implemented the furloughs. We didn't make any presumption that that would be a continuation. Of course, it's going to be available to us next year. But that was considered at that time a one-time measure, $1.3 million. We also, as you might recall, reduced funding for our vehicle replacement fund of $372,000, one-time measure. And then, as I mentioned, holding vacant positions and other sort of one-time measures this year in November, total almost $1.6 million. So really, next year, our expenditures are going to go up by $5.3 million, assuming no additional labor concessions and no extension of furloughs. So I just assume none of that. So the real scope of our problem next year is about $8.9 million. And with that, unless there are any questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. And if the Anacapa students have any ideas as you go back to class, please let us know. So I know some of you are leaving. Mr. Armstrong.
Go back to that last slide for just a minute, Bob. And I think it's important to note on this, although we have this number to the nearest dollar, this is still our best estimate at this point. It's probably plus or minus a million dollars. We will update our revenue estimates when, every month, when we get our bed tax. In March, when we get our sales tax, we will update them. I think on the expenditure side, that's a very good number in terms of the salary and benefit increases. It's a very good number in terms of the others, in terms of the expenditure side. But on the revenue side, it's still a variable number. In terms of the strategy that we're following, go ahead. Again, we have just started meeting with the departments in terms of their budgets. In fact, I had my first meeting with some of the public works folks this morning to go through their proposed budgets. But we have two, I think, key strategies that will go in parallel. The first is, and this is probably our number one strategy, is to work with all of our labor groups to generate cost savings wherever we can through wage and benefit reductions. I know nobody likes to hear that, but we would much rather work with our unions and try and generate savings than cut services. So that's our number one strategy, to do that. And I'm glad we've got a bunch of labor representatives here. And we have already met with all the labor associations, and we will continue to meet with them as soon as Kristi Schmidt gets her voice back. Our second option, and this will, I know will generate a lot of controversy in the community, but I've asked all of the departments to develop options, and in the non-safety departments, up to 12% of their operating budget, and in the safety departments, up to 10%, so we know what the options are. Because if we're unable to achieve significant labor, wage, and benefit savings, we're then going to have to cut expenditures. And so we need to know what those options are. And what I've asked the departments to do is not just give me one number, but to basically kind of say, what's their highest priority? What would they first cut, second, third, fourth, if they have revenue options? And we'll talk about a few of them, to put those into the equation. And our plan will be that when we present the budget to you, we will give you all of those options. And so that if we're recommending something you don't like, you can see the other options that we considered or would be available to you, so you can insert them in. But this is going to be a parallel process. We'll work with the labor associations. But meanwhile, we have to identify what's the worst-case scenario if we're not able to generate significant savings. So that's our strategy.
Mr. White, did you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And that is, I missed a beat between last fiscal year and the one coming up. My understanding is it was a million-dollar shortfall, and I didn't know whether that was covered from in 2010 or whether it was brought forward to 2011.
No, it's not covered. We're going to do everything we can do to try and save it, but it may mean that we're going to go further into reserves.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
What's the timeline on the options you just talked about?
The departments are developing them now. I will be meeting with them, and we're going to go over the schedule later. Over the next month, we'll be then coming to you in mid-April with a proposed budget. Hopefully by then, we'll reach agreements with our labor associations, but maybe we won't. We may have to actually continue those discussions. And I expect this is really going to play out all the way to the end of June. Just in terms of talking a little about the benefit of working with our associations, this chart's a little complicated, but it's what we call the 1% number. And it shows you in our various labor associations what 1% of salary totals out to. And the column on the left is all funds, so that includes all of our enterprise operations as well as the general fund. And what's really critical is the right-hand column, which is the general fund, because that's where we have our most significant difficulties. And it's subtitled by public safety. You can see in the general fund, the Police Officer Association, 1% equals $200,000. Fire Association, $121,000. Police Management Association, which is a group of managers there. We have unrepresented employees or managers in both fire and police. Then in terms of the other employees of the organization, the general, SEIU, our treatment and patrol, that's $164,000 in the general fund. And you can see there, one of the interesting things with the SEIU employees is only half of the savings are in the general fund. The other would be in the enterprise operations. The treatment and patrol, the 1% number, it's hardly anything in the general fund mainly. And that's our wastewater, wastewater employees, our water employees, and our harbor patrol and our airport patrol. Confidential is a small group of employees. They're basically folks who deal in some way or another with labor negotiations, and so we call them confidential. The non-safety managers, that would be your department heads and mid-managers who are unrepresented, and then you can see the supervisors. So the 1% number in the general fund is about $600,000.
Mr. Williams, did you have a question? Or do you want...
It was to your last point about a parallel process. You know, I like this process as it's being laid out. The only thing that I'm wondering about is why, if we're going to try to handle this, and if we have to handle this through looking at this, why we are having actions sprung on us like a brownout four days before it's planned on being implemented? If we're going to have a parallel process and figure out how to deal with this crisis together, why are we being informed by a hearing only four days before it's being proposed to be implemented?
Good question. The problem is, we have a problem this fiscal year we need to deal. And if you tell me, don't do the brownout for the rest of this year, then basically our problem goes up $400,000. I really don't like bringing it to you, but in terms of kind of how the data works and the timing, it's unfortunate that we, you know, and I apologize because I would have liked to have brought to you with more time. But we've been generating these options and looking at the numbers. And again, if you have really strong feelings on that, it's a way to, through, by just not providing overtime, but it does have a significant service impact. And I'm not going to deny that it does. But you also, when you look at the problem, our options are pretty limited, quite honestly, unless you want us to then consider layoffs or if you want to go further into reserves. Just to put it in perspective, this is the value of general fund labor concessions if we went to the 5% level. You can see that would generate about $3.3 million, leaving a problem of about $5.5 million. At 7%, you can see it's about a 50-50 split. At the 10% level, it would save about $600, or $6.6 million, leaving a problem of about 2.2. And then if you tried to solve the whole problem through wage and labor concessions, it'd be, it'd take about a 13.4%. But I do think it's important to remind you that we are already have identified about $1.5 million in currently vacant positions that I expect we will recommend not be filled. So it's probably more in that 10% range with those positions that we've already identified, and I don't expect that will fill. Among the options we will be discussing with the labor associations, one will be the continuation of the furlough program and possibly pushing it even a little further. The program we had this year with the miscellaneous employees and some other other employees totaled about 5% and generated savings of about $1.5 million. We have some existing labor agreements that we could increase out without salary increases or possibly with reductions. We could work with, we have existing MOUs that go into next fiscal year. We could look to see a suspension or elimination of upcoming salary increases. We have, as you saw, we have $2.3 million of additional salary and benefit increases next fiscal year. We have a program called Vacation Cashouts that allow employees to basically sell back some of their unused vacation. We've suspended that among many of the employees this year. We could continue that next year. We could ask our employees to pay a portion of their retirement costs. Some of our employees do not pay matching costs towards their retirement. We could seek to ask them to pay for part of it. And we could ask our employees to pay for a greater portion of their benefit cost. And there may be other options as well. But these are the areas that we're looking at and discussing with the associations. In my opinion, gaining significant labor concessions are going to be essential to try and avoid significant service cuts. It's a really important part of this. We really believe that all of the labor unions need to be part of the solution. We've had some of the associations say they would agree to significant cuts, but they want what's called Me Too clauses. That means that they'll agree to it, but they want to make sure that they're not the only ones. And with existing labor agreements, in some cases, we have agreements that go until, I think, as far as January. It makes it difficult because it has to be a, they have to agree to it. It has to be by mutual agreement. In other cases, the council may have the options to be more, you know, to impose actions. But in some, we have existing labor contracts, and we need to abide by those contracts. To put in perspective how we have allocated out the options, just gives you a feel for the types of numbers we're dealing with. And I think it's important to note, you'll see that this number exceeds the total amount of the problem by about $2 million. And that's because we wanted options and alternatives. If we just asked, if we just came up with the amount we needed, then there wouldn't be any alternatives to look at. And so it's important when you hear departments talking about the options they're looking at, we won't use all of the options that are proposed. But again, for first, for me, to make recommendations to you, and then for you to be able to make intelligent decisions, we think we need to identify options greater than what we need. But these are big numbers. They're huge numbers. You can see in community development, it's $1,001,000 for a relatively small department. In the fire department, it's $2.1 million. In the police department, it's $3.3 million. They're huge numbers. Parks and Recreation, $1,006,000. And I think it's important to note, this is on top of the reductions that all of the departments incurred this current year, where we've had significant staffing reductions, especially in community development and Parks and Recreation this year. So you can say that there's no way that we can implement anything close to this where it's not, it is going to impact services. I don't want to use scare tactics, but I do want you to know the things that the departments are considering right now. And again, this is just what they're currently looking at. I haven't seen all of these and fleshed them out, but we wanted you to be aware of the things we're looking at. The Parks and Recreation Department is looking definitely at the closure of actual parks and facilities. When we look at this subsidy issue, what they're looking at, they have to look at is those programs that are most heavily subsidized by tax revenues. It doesn't make any sense, for example, to eliminate a contract class where the participants pay pretty much 100% of the cost. So the things that we subsidize heavily are things like teen activities, after-school sports, and summer youth drop-in programs. Some of the most critical programs in terms of our long-term strategies for gang problems and stuff like that. The elimination of several of our adult sports programs, such as basketball, volleyball, and soccer. In administrative functions, we expect a reduction in the repairs of computers and delays in responding to calls. We're looking seriously at city TV, and I expect we would be recommending pretty significant reductions in TV programming. The city clerk's office with staffing reductions won't be able to respond as quickly to responses for information. And we're looking at eliminating pretty much our entire city internal training program. At the library, we expect that we will be recommending reduced library hours, longer lines for assistance there, and significant reductions in the library youth services programs that we do both at the library and in outreach to schools. In community development, pretty much across the board reductions, heavy reductions in zoning enforcement, a reduction of our building inspectors, design review, building counter support, and we're proposing reductions in the number of planners assigned to Plan Santa Barbara. In the police department, if we have to make reductions there, we will be looking at what we call the specialty areas. These are the areas that are not in patrol but are still very, very important programs, such as DARE, our detectives, our BEAC Coordinator Program, and Tactical Patrol. But the goal will be to maintain basic patrol services. This would also result in less police activities in the schools, where we do work with the schools, our ability to monitor gang issues, and some of our intervention strategies. These are not things we want to do, but we, in terms of how the numbers work, it's pretty much what we have to look at. And at the fire department, the chief is looking at a possible fire station closure, not just the overtime issue we're talking about today, but actually the potential to close a station, which clearly would result in longer response times in the community.
Mr. Hotchkiss, you had a question?
I do. Those service reductions you're talking about, are those a reflection of personnel reductions or a contraction of hours that people are working?
They're a reflection of less people, staff reductions, just less people doing the work.
Thank you.
And in terms of the number of positions, it could result in the elimination of up to about 80. And again, this, don't hold me to this number, but of approximately 53 are currently filled. And this is, again, it's a moving target, and these are options. And this is, again, it's a moving target, and these are options. But when approximately 80% of the monies go towards people, this is pretty much what you have to make the reductions in, especially when we've already hit the other fund, or other areas of the budget pretty hard.
In this fiscal year, we eliminated how many positions?
I believe it's 37 were eliminated in the current year, at the beginning of the year.
And so this would be on top of that?
Yeah. And there's about 650 positions in the general fund. It's less than that now. So it's, when you hear 1,000 city employees, you really have to look at about the 650 that are funded through the general fund.
Thank you. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Yeah, you talked about the elimination this year of 39 positions, I think, what did you say?
That's correct.
Were those actual elimination, or were they attrition and not fulfilled?
They were vacant positions that we had been holding for the last couple of years that we eliminated.
They were in the budget and taken out of the budget.
Okay, so we didn't actually let somebody go. They departed, and we didn't fill?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We're also looking at revenue options, and I would appreciate some input from the city council on these. Again, we're, because if you would like us to look, especially in the new taxes area, the earliest we could get this on a ballot would be in November. Library parcel tax is one. It's our understanding that the county and the city of Galita are currently looking at putting a parcel tax on the ballot. We could get together with them and try and do something across the entire South Coast that could generate some funds. My understanding is that would take a two-thirds vote. The council will be receiving a report soon about possibly doing some polling on a single-use bag tax. In terms of its revenue potential, I'm not sure. Some communities have increased sales taxes. This was especially prevalent in Ventura County a year and a half, two years ago. Port Juaniemi, Oxnard did this, and were successful. Ventura recently has tried twice and has not been successful. If the council goes forward with the marijuana dispensaries, you may want to look at putting something on the ballot and gross receipts. I want to caution you that the city attorney has significant concerns about the legality of that. In fact, he didn't like it being on this list. But I think you're aware that the city of Oakland looked at this and actually put it on the ballot and was successful. And I don't know how much money they've received on it, but, I mean, I think all options are open, and if the council wants us to explore this, it's something we could look at.
Could you explain library parcel tax? I don't know what that is.
A library parcel tax would basically be an amount either, normally they're like, you know, $30 per single residential parcel, and it's just assessed to every parcel. Or you could do a more complicated benefit assessment district, but the parcel tax is probably the simplest, and then it would be a two-thirds vote.
Like a school bond?
Yeah, normally a school bond is...
Buying bonds, but I mean, in terms of how it affects the taxpayer, it's allocated on your property tax.
Yes. And there is a current library parcel tax in the community services district over in the Galita area that pays for library services already. So they have a history there in that area, and that's part of how they fund the library and the Galita library.
And, but does that, those revenues go to the general fund, or just to the library?
They would go just to the library.
Oh, okay.
But if you had money that went to the library, then that could potentially free up money to go to other services.
And what kind of money we're looking at there?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure. We'd have to do an assessment. I mean, there's probably 40,000 residential parcels in the city, so if you had $30, what's that million-two? One that's relatively minor, but we wanted you to be aware, we're looking at it. And as you know, the rental mediation housing, or the rental housing mediation program has had some funding issues because of block grant monies. We're looking at putting a fee on business licenses. It would be basically an added fee that we would charge for that service, basically that benefits rental housing. We're currently looking at that to see how that would work. We could make substantial increases to our planning fees. We still have low-cost recovery in the planning side of community development. Where on the building side, building permits and plan check is pretty much cost recovery. It may be a little low now because of the decline in activity. There are agencies, and the county's a good example, where they pretty much get 100% cost recovery. We have always taken the, you know, in terms of kind of city policy, is that because we have a pretty complex planning process, that we weren't trying to get full cost recovery there. It wouldn't generate a lot of money, but probably it could get, Paul, maybe half a million dollars. One thing that we, and this isn't a new revenue, but it's something that, again, we want to mention, and that is that it is costing us about $300,000 to have a standalone election. If we consolidated with the county, it would probably, and this would be, again, a ballot initiative to amend the charter, we could save a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. One thing that the police department is also looking at is the feasibility of the city having its own storage facility. Right now, we, there are private facilities, storage facilities. There are some cities that have done this and have generated a significant amount of money. We've even looked at the RDA property on Casique as a possible location for this.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Regarding the planning fees, could that be tied to a reduction in the time that planning would take if we increased the fee and said, "Okay, we're going to buy," you get to buy time then?
You've been talking to Mr. Williams.
No.
Is Mr. Casey here? I'll let him address that.
Mr. Casey, and I see Irene Mysiers from the library. If you had a, I know you came up, but I think it was answered, right? Yeah, okay.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, depends. You know, one, it depends on the staffing level that we have to continue to support the process, and then it also depends if there's community and political will to change our process.
Well, if I could comment on that, there's a lot of community will to speed the process up, and this might be a way to do it.
Might be hard to speed the process up if you're cutting the staff who's doing, unless you cut the process, so.
We can work on that.
We can work on that.
And we can discuss that. And I'll just say, you know, we tried to speed the process up with a series of zoning amendments that we thought were pretty minor in nature, that we could get through, that would help create efficiency in the way we review projects. Took us three years, and we didn't accomplish as much as we wanted due to community input that didn't want to make those changes. So I don't think it's a given that it would be easy to speed the process up.
I want to make, you want to make sure, go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
All I can say is there are a lot of people that would love to do it, and, you know, particularly T-Fire and Hazazida Fire folks, and that would have an enormous boost on our construction industry, and that just ripples out. So if we could get super efficient, you know, they might entertain paying a little bit more for it.
I do want to be able to get to public comments, so can we, why don't we have Mr. Armstrong finish his presentation, go to questions? We'll have plenty of time for comments after the public, okay? Thank you.
And with that, I'll just make a few closing remarks. As Mr. White pointed out, we have not yet dealt fully with our projected shortfall this year. It may require the use of budgetary reserves. It's in the range of about a million dollars. It could be less, it could be more. My expectation is, if we don't have greater revenue declines than what we expect, that the number will probably be less than a million dollars. But the revenue is the big option. The reductions, we have already included reductions in the adopted budget. We've implemented more in November, and then the additional ones we're implementing now are, clearly will affect service levels. I think the, I think the staff has done a good job of trying to mitigate the impact of the public, but we are starting to see the stress level go up, and I expect it will get up and get higher. For next year, as we said, it's about an $8.9 million problem. Our first priority is to work with all of our labor associations to achieve meaningful salary and benefit savings, and those have to be real. But I have asked departments to prepare options that they can implement, and that first I can consider, and then you can consider, in terms of service reductions and reductions in staffing. And if we're unable to achieve those salary and benefit reductions, you know, we're very concerned about service level impacts to the public, and it would require reductions in all departments by the very nature of that first, that slide you saw about, you know, where the tax money goes, that with 70% of it going to public safety, it's hard to exclude as public safety, although it's a very high priority, because mathematically you almost can't get there in the other departments. In terms of the budget schedule, we are working with the departments right now and going through their budgets. We'll have a series of meetings. In many cases, what we have to do is look at their options. In some cases, they're not realistic. The finance folks have to look at them and make sure that they're calculated correctly. We get this issue about real savings, and, for example, if we cut positions that are administrative, and 60% of them are covered through the overhead rate, then we really need to identify what are the true savings. Our plan is to bring to you a recommended budget on April the 20th with our best recommendation at that point, and also with all of the options we've looked at. And then we will turn it over to you. But I expect that we'll be also meeting with the labor associations in parallel, and we hope to get the budget adopted by June the 22nd.
Thank you. I appreciate the transparency under difficult circumstances that this presentation brought forth for everyone to see. Any questions from the council, and then we'll get to public comment. Mr. House?
Just really briefly, Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Samario. I did, what I didn't see there, I'm not advocating for at all, but I just didn't see dipping into what we call the, like, what the disaster reserves and the capital reserve. So the 16% of the overall budget is left alone in case we had a catastrophe or some terrible thing, right? And so when you talk about dipping into budget reserves, you're talking about that 10% if moves, as you've shown us, and that we've fairly well depleted at this point. But that's what you're talking about. You're not going after disaster reserves at any point, right?
Mario?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, that's actually, that's correct. That's absolutely correct. We aren't proposing this year or next year, and we don't anticipate proposing the use of any disaster.
And if we ever did, which I don't think we would ever, I'd be such a surprise if the council would want to do that, but it would only be a one-time thing, right? It wouldn't be like an ongoing solution of any sort.
And we don't expect, and you probably won't see us proposing next year any use of those reserves either. We're trying to come up with a balanced approach, maybe using some one-time items in terms of furloughs and those kinds of things, but no use of reserves next year are going to be proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions from council, so I'm going to turn it to the public. I have a few speakers' slips here. Nicolai Lambert, turn that on, will be followed by Terry Tyler.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm here to voice my concern about the closing of Fire Station Number Three. That's a very, very vital fire station for the city of Santa Barbara, for the Upper East Side, parts of the Lower Riviera, parts of the downtown area. That station serves a very big part of the community. It's the oldest firehouse in the city, and our community would be lost without it. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Tyler will be followed by John Turner.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Just want to express a couple of thoughts. As you, probably some of you know me, I'm a retired CPA and former auditor, outside auditor of both the county and the state, so have some experience with these matters. And I respect Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Samario's approach, but consider that we're looking for short-term solutions here, and we may have a long-term problem on our hands. There's no guarantee that we're ever going to get back to the revenue levels that we had in recent years. That would force us to live with the cuts that are made. So I think we may want to incorporate some long-term planning into these scenarios, because I don't see this turning around in the immediate future, and I don't think anybody's now optimistic enough to think that it's going to. So as we look out one year or a couple of months, we may, might want to start thinking in terms of five years. And that would make us start thinking about maybe consolidating departments. One possibility would be to look back at prior years where revenues were comparable to what we're looking at now, or what we're expecting, and looking at the staffing that we had in those years. Somehow, when we had these lesser amounts of revenue, the city was able to function. Now, we're talking about potentially cutting, I think it was 80 positions to meet next year's goals. But I would suggest that if you went back to a revenue year in the past that was comparable to what we're looking at next year, those 80 positions might not be there. How was the city able to function without those 80 positions? It's food for thought. I do think another possibility would be to relieve you guys of the political pressure. Might want to consider looking at appointing a blue ribbon commission to study this problem long-term, much as what you did with the capital budget problem. Because I do think we're looking at a long-term problem, and all the Band-Aids are about used up. You can only raid that self-insurance fund so many times, because I think what you're going to find is, if you do start laying people off, those work comp claims will probably increase dramatically. So thank you for your time. Please consider my thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. John Turner, be followed by last speaker, George Green.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Jim Armstrong. I've got my whole prepared script written out here, so I can talk to you guys. But obviously, the elephant in the room today is the fact that in less than 80 hours, a fire station could be browned out. And our concern, obviously, is that, you know, this has happened fast. This has come up on you guys, it's come up on us a little bit faster. We're talking a lot about the 2011 budget, and we're also talking about this 2011, or this 2010 budget shortfall. Nobody is going to come up and tell you that closing that fire station will not impact response time. It will not impact service to the community, okay? We don't think that you or anyone yet has been provided with enough information or time to adequately address the thought of closing a fire station within 80 hours. You know, you ask us to come to the table, we're going to come to the table. We have been working with the fire department to look at options in this budget crisis. We will work with the city to find ways to reduce our payroll. And, you know, we've actually been doing stuff in the last couple of weeks already. We've been meeting with all of you guys, kind of explaining stuff. One of the other things that we've been involved in is the obtaining of a lot of detailed GIS information, starting to look at what kind of things are actually at risk. We provided all those maps. We've worked closely with the department. We've provided all those maps and information to the fire chief. We're meeting with the fire chief, trying to figure out what the best way is, one, to present that information to you, and two, how do we get you guys together and answer the questions that you're naturally going to have about that. You know, kind of in closing, I'll say that, you know, closing Station Three, a brownout, does nothing to improve efficiency, does nothing to solve the long-term issue. We've had seven stations in the town proper since 1962, with a lot less population, running with a lot less calls. That fire station's been in service since 1929. Let's not let Monday morning be the first time in those 80 years that they're going to open without a fire engine there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. The last speaker will be George Green.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm George Green. I'm the organizing director for SEIE Local 620. We've already been meeting with your staff to talk about, you know, salary concessions, et cetera. You know, I think folks know the agreement SEIE reached with the city last week. The thing that kind of freaks me about the presentation, and again, you know, I've heard these numbers from Bob in more of a, you know, in more of a bargaining context, but I can't understand why some of the, like, the property tax projection, if you look at the CAFR that you closed out in June of '09, your property tax grew by 3.5% in '09. Why are we projecting such pessimistic property tax growth? And really, I have the same question about sales tax. I mean, you look at most of the cities around here, they're projecting, you know, 2% to 4% growth in sales tax, and we're talking about flat. It's a big deal to us, because, you know, those projections work into, you know, the problem that we're trying to help work on, right? So those things, you know, I just, I was sitting there debating whether I should talk or not, because, you know, it's so early in the process, you know, I think that, you know. I will say that, you know, we're committed to, you know, being a partner. We want to, you know, do everything we can to see, you know, service levels maintained where they are. I think that's going to be more difficult this year than it was last. I think that's going to be more difficult this year than it was last year. I think, you know, today or sometime really soon, because we're hearing stuff from the folks that we represent in departments that, and again, we're going to continue to talk with your staff, so I'm not going to get into specificity. I think that's an end around on your staff. But we're hearing stuff that's like really illogical that people are being told about departmental budgets. So I think as policymakers, whoops, I think as policymakers, it's important that you guys come out with something at least that's direction to departments that says, to whatever extent possible, these cuts should be made as far away from direct services as possible, number one. And number two, if you've got positions that are, like, why are we asking Public Works to cut 12% out of their budget when they, when, if you looked at that one chart, 90 to 93% of what they spend, they generate as revenue? So anyway, you know, there's inconsistencies, but again, we're committed to continue to work with your staff and I think it was a very good presentation.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I also want to acknowledge personally the members of the Fire Association and SEIU for being willing to come to the table in the middle of a contract. You don't have to do that, so I do appreciate that. Okay, back to the council. Anything else, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Samario? Mr. Williams?
These are tough times and are going to require us to take some hard actions. And I do support us taking decisive actions such as raising revenue and entering into a dialogue as to how we can solve this together. I feel like the model that we achieved last year was a good one, where we put out how many positions and how much money was required to save those positions, and then we worked with the rank and file of our employees to figure out solutions that would prevent those most draconian of cuts from taking place. And it made for a team spirit last year that I think was really productive even in the midst of some very tough times. And I would just hope that we continue with that. And part of that, I think, is being able to give enough notice and to have a dialogue before action is taken. And it is for that reason I believe that we should not brown out or close Station Three, that we should delay action for at least a month so that there may be a dialogue with the Firefighters Association of what alternatives that they are proposing. And I just think that that's the basics that we need to be doing if we're going to work together with our employees to solve some of the basic problems. I also think that we need to move hard on the revenue. I know, you know, it's an unpopular thing to talk about. I know that sometimes when we, the last slide that comes up is the, what the other options there are is revenue, that I'm the only one who wants to talk about it. But I think we have to talk about it because there are going to be such bad cuts that take place next year if we do not raise some tax, if we do not give the voters the option to raise a tax, because obviously we can't do that ourselves. We can only allow the voters to choose that yes or no. And I think giving the voters the option to decide for themselves whether they want to keep these services and are willing to pay for them is good and is democratic. And I think that, you know, I think all of those things are things that are good. I would just say that if the county is going ahead with a parcel tax, that's going to make it very difficult for them both to pass if we go forward with ours unless we do it in some kind of coordinated fashion. I would say the single-use bag tax is probably one of the more interesting ideas because, and we've already gone farther on that than any of the others. I think the RFP closed on Tuesday for that, for the poll on that. I'm not, you know, I'm not wedded to doing a poll or not, as me and Dale have talked about before, but I do think we should put it on the ballot because I think this is an interesting situation where both public safety and environmentalists and our public employees all have one interest. You know, by reducing waste, which would be one of the things that the single-use bag fee would do, of course, the other part that it would do if it was 15 or 20 cents, it would generate revenue that could help save us some of the vital services that we have in the city. So I really think that we need to move forward and put at least that on the ballot and maybe some other measures. I also just wanted to ask the basic question, did we renew the lease for the additional space at the police department? Because I know that was one of the things that we could do to save a significant amount of money.
I think that the lease expires, what, at the end of this calendar year?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I will once again beat the drum for two things. One is to examine how much money really needs to be in the vehicle replacement fund. I think that replacement of non-safety vehicles should be looked at very, very hard. And I also think that we should be looking at other options for space in existing city facilities instead of renewing the lease for that annex at the police department. I, you know, and if it means a radical shifting around of offices, I think that's fine. I would gladly share my office with some other city employee if that's a way that we can help save money and save jobs and save basic services for the people of the city.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Armstrong, just one question. This date of March 1st for the potential brownout at Fire Station Three on Solis Street, where does that come from?
Just in terms of trying to achieve significant savings, there's nothing magical about it.
Okay.
Like I said, if there was a sense of the council you wanted to hold off, you know, just recognize that it's about $100,000 a month.
Right. Okay. Well, at least my own personal sense is I would like to hold off on that. I think it's, I would like to understand better the dynamics that are going on in terms of fire department response time. I would feel much more comfortable having at least, you know, three weeks or so to really explore the issues before we took action on something like that. And I realize there's a cost associated with that. I agree with Mr. Williams. I, well, I agree with your presentation as well. Obviously, we're facing some huge, huge difficulties. When you have continuously declining revenues over a period of two years, we can't keep spending the same amount of money. And though I don't object to Mr. Williams's idea of floating ideas about revenue increases, I feel it's pretty unlikely that the voters are going to go along with new taxes right now, when we're facing over 11% unemployment in the state as a whole. And we have to realize that there have already been a lot of layoffs in the private sector. And I'm sure all of us have friends and family members who have, if they haven't been laid off, they've experienced wage reductions, hours reductions. So I really feel that it's unlikely that we're going to convince the voters of Santa Barbara to impose more taxes on themselves, even for services that many of us in this room feel are absolutely vital. And I think no one knows better than we do just how much the people of this city, the workers in this city, provide for people. You know, we see a lot more behind the scenes, we see a bigger picture. Individual citizens, their contact with the city is when something happens on their block typically, or when it happens to them personally. And we do get a lot of email, a lot of phone calls from people who are delighted when somebody steps in and does something absolutely vital for them. But let's face it, that doesn't happen to any one individual very often. What happens to lots of people all the time in a disastrously down economy like this is they see their own wages, their own possibilities for economic advancement going down. So I just think realistically, it's unlikely we're going to get voter buy-in for tax increases right now. So what that means to me is that all of us in this room, all of us in the city, are going to have to work together really, really hard and be serious about this to find ways to be as efficient as possible and to reduce service levels as little as possible, but I don't see how we're going to get around it without some reductions. That's the reality of the kind of economy we're in. But I can say this, and I think I speak for everyone up here, that we will all work as hard as we can with all of you to make it through this with as little trouble, and there's going to be trouble no matter what we do, but as little impact on people as possible. And that's really what we're all trying to accomplish, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, a question. Mr. Green raised the notion of potential, that other cities are forecasting a 2% increase in sales tax, where we're estimating a flat sales tax. And that, I've raised the concern with staff along the way that we get a projection this time that's at least as pessimistic as what comes in. And so I appreciate that that's what, that staff is trying to get there after being hit upside the head several times over the last couple of years. But I think it would be, can the notion of if revenues do increase, can there be a loop that goes back to staff somehow or to the various bargaining groups that provides better compensation or less pain if we do see an increase in sales tax revenues?
Mr. Armstrong?
Let me try and address it. First, in terms of the property tax, you know, we get data from the county as to what their assessments are and that's why, you know, when Mr. Green said, "Why did it go down?" I mean, "Why are you projecting it?" It's based upon the county and we, once they get their assessment done, issue, we'll ask them again. A big variable there is what we call supplemental, which is, that occurs when properties change hands in the middle of the year or when people do construction. But I think on that, you know, we get the best data we can. We ask the county exactly, "What do you guys think?" And in this case, we went with what they told us and then it's coming in lower because they misestimate, their estimate was too high. On sales tax, once we get the March, you know, our problem with sales tax, and it's very frustrating, is the state gives us advances and then every three months, they true up. And we try and get other data. For example, we get some data from Pasanuevo because they pay us lease based on gross receipts and so we use that to say, "Okay, maybe it's a little better." Actually, our sales tax is almost exactly the same as the statewide decline this last quarter, the quarter of the end of December, almost identical. In terms of talking with the other cities in the county, it's pretty similar. Galita had an anomaly because they got a back payment from some that had been allocated to another city. But we will, you know, I hope we can update the revenue estimates. Even on the TOT, you know, I'm pushing the finance staff and to say, "Are you guys being too pessimistic?" And we will reevaluate it as best we can and share that data we have with the associations. I think we're, typically, the finance staff has been within 1% on the revenues, all of them, tax revenues. And we're now at a period where we don't trust the state, even though they've got, you know, full-time economists that do nothing but project this because they've been so far off. And we are operating a little bit in the dark here. There's just nobody giving good projections out there. I think the state is being overly optimistic next year, thinking it's going to be up the kind of numbers they are, but we're going to look at it carefully.
Madam Mayor, I mean, my question had to do with, if we did better than we expected, is there a way to bring that back to our employees to some degree and have that be part of the negotiation that goes on, saying, "If things are better, then that gets shared"?
I think that can be part of the discussion. I think the one thing we have to be careful about is, is we're still using a ton of one-time solutions to balance this and I expect that in working with the associations, it's going to be one-time types of solutions, like the furlough. And so we have to build that into the equation. And what I expect typically will happen is in the following year, if we were too conservative or pessimistic, then the associations will come back and say, "Wait a second, you guys did better than you expected and now let's true up."
Well, and that's, the point, and first of all, I really appreciate, if I may then go into my comments, Madam Mayor, that appreciate both my colleagues' comments thus far, that we are in this together and that I think that we ought to take 30 days to look at Station Three and bring that back to our fire staff for other suggestions? Is there other things to be, okay, we're losing $100,000, we're investing $100,000 in this over the next 30 days. How do we then save the next $300,000, you're talking $400,000 for this fiscal year? How do we do that going forward without closing Station Three? So that would be something that could go out there as an option for this fiscal year and I would support that. And I appreciate that Station Three sits in a critical spot there, that we don't have extra fire stations out there. That's very clear. And that we, as a city, we are, the good news here is that we are truly a community. This is not a bunch of strangers or a bunch of people that don't relate to one another. We are in this together. And it is a very traumatic time and I want to work with each and every one of staff and citizens and give citizens options for increasing revenues, although I share Mr. Francisco's view that I, as a private sector person, can attest that revenues are, if it's bad for the government, I can assure you that it's awful for the private sector and very traumatic. And the safety nets are not there for much of the private sector, which are there for the public sector. So I'm leery, I'm not optimistic about the outcome of asking for more revenues, although I appreciate that it may be appropriate to put that out there as an option for our community because we are looking at some really sad reductions of service. And I appreciate that Mr. Samario and Mr. Armstrong have had to work so hard and try and keep up with this really difficult situation and you're, as our mayor said, providing of a transparent set of conditions and options going forward. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Ms. Self.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was surprised to hear about the brownout and a little disappointed that I found out from citizens, but I would not be in any way supporting a brownout of a fire department. And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Williams. I appreciate that. My understanding is that the fire stations are placed in a way that there's only four minutes between them, excuse me, for them to get to a situation and help the community. And I find that unacceptable to lose one of our key facilities, even if it costs us money. And I hope that those in negotiations, one minute, will consider the position we're in and that we're asking you to give up something. Nobody wants to give up wage. That is very painful or benefit, even if you're not seeing it right now. But we're in a hard spot. We're asking you to get on board, show good faith in that we can then provide the services and not eliminate your job. That is part of the goal here, is to maintain services. And I'm sure when things turn around, that the city will negotiate in good faith and return what you have given up. Regarding Blue Ribbon Committee to make decisions for us, I believe we were the elected officials and that whether we like it or not, that's what we asked for, to be here making these decisions. And to put it off to some other thing that's supposed to cover us from political harm, I find that not acceptable from where I see it. I find that not acceptable from where I sit. As far as taxes, no way, no how, nowhere. The taxes you're talking about are proven to hurt the lowest economic people in our community. And as we just heard, they're already suffering, and we don't need to add to that. We need to tighten our belt. Yes, you will lose some services, but the, say, like a bag tax. The state's talking about this, too. So people are going to end up paying 45, 50 cents for a bag. And I think through education that people are going in that direction and that we shouldn't be, you know, we talk about greedy business. I think there's some greedy government going on sometimes, too. The tax for rental, the landlord doesn't pay that tax. You know who does? The renter. I find it fundamentally unfair to keep finding new revenue sources. The other one is a tow yard. Okay, we don't do tow yards yet, so that would be a whole, totally new revenue sources. What about the man who is invested in tow yard? We put him out of business. We now have eliminated his livelihood. Where is the fairness in that? You know, I just find these creative ideas, which I have talked about privately, too, we don't need to get too creative up here. And I think Mr. Tyler's idea of going back and seeing, at this point of revenue, what did we do? And trimming some of the fat, but I have said all along that we need to prioritize what we do for this community. And I believe that one of the biggest responsibilities that we, as a city, have is public safety. I don't think there's anything higher in priority to what the community expects us to do. We have high crime rates. We've had fires ravage this community regularly, and we need to support the people who keep us safe. So, let me see. Oh, revenue. I have an idea. We have a lot of properties that the city owns, and maybe we can look at divesting ourselves of some of those properties that we have. And again, it's a one-time, but if we don't need it, let's take care of some of our problems that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you very much. This is really a very difficult situation, and it's not just, it sort of seemed to come on us overnight, but now what we have is not just a need for one-time fixes. We really are, I think, adjusting to, perhaps it's a new reality, at least we should act like it, I think, for the foreseeable future, and really begin to plan for the long term at reduced levels of revenue. And that may mean that we have to really look, I mean, we're close to the point where we need to look at the structure of what we're doing as a government agency. And we've been dealing with this in sort of a crisis mode, and so we've been using single one-time sources of fixes, thinking that it would begin to improve soon. And it may very well, but it doesn't seem like it, and I'm concerned about that. I think we've got that from our staff really loud and clear, that we're getting to the end of our ability to use one-time fixes. We need to do things that are really structural, perhaps. And that, I didn't hear that much today, and that's the thing that I'm really wanting to comment on. And that is that we seem to be still trying to work within, reducing within the existing structure. And I honestly don't have a solution to offer, but to say, I'm willing to have us take a look and see. Well, maybe one example has been the way our Parks and Recreation Department has begun to look at the internal dynamic of their organization and began to consolidate within and not to stay within the original structure that they had had, which had little silos and such. And they've really begun to pull it together in a different form. I have a sense that there may be some value to looking at things that way for us. Then again, you know, given that we have the fees and rates that we can alter for the enterprise funds, and we're able to hold them whole that way, it sort of gives us a model. And this is where I think I might differ from at least one of my colleagues here, and that is that we really have to look at that revenue side. We cannot continue to look at only cost. We have to find ways to generate, and as much as we can in terms of full cost recovery when it comes to, say, in the Community Development Department, and continue to work in that direction there. And I'm not against looking at taxes where they make sense. We have, I think you'd be surprised at the resiliency and the intelligence of the public when it comes to something that really makes sense for them. A library parcel tax may or fee might actually be amenable to them. The library produces dramatic value to the community, and it's highly regarded. That would help. That would, it is a general fund improvement there in terms of revenue. That would help the rest of our general fund if that would work. So I don't want to get into the details, but I'm definitely open to us looking at that. I think that from a general approach, I would really, as a policymaker and as somebody who's going to be having to approve this at the end, is to know that we've really listened to our employees really well, that we've really, I mean, the people that are on the ground really delivering these services are as committed to them as anybody. They're the ones that have been doing the great work of keeping Santa Barbara so good. And they can see opportunities and ways for improved efficiencies or maybe ways to make the alterations that could be really systemic. And I guess I appreciate the spirit with which the bargaining units that were here today came forward and spoke to us. We're all going to have to work on this together. Top-down approach just can't, won't make it. And so I'm really hopeful that the spirit that our department heads engage in this is one that really does listen well. And then on the other side, that we don't have within the bargaining units themselves and in the employees' sense of an adversarial relationship. We will not get through this if we adopt that tone. We need to have a sense of cooperation here. Basic principles, I don't think that we should cut, we should look very carefully about cutting our revenue generators. We need to be very careful to continue to keep those kinds of things as close to fully funded as possible. And of course, the obvious is to keep the cuts as far away from the public as possible. But the other side of that is, I think we need to be really candid and honest with people, as you seem to open up today about what these adjustments and cuts are going to mean to the public. They need to know. It can't be a surprise. It has to be something that they've been forewarned about, can make adjustments to. And so we need to be very, have all the cards up on the table and let people know what's coming. So this is clearly a community issue. It's going to require our constituents, the employees in our city itself, but also the businesses and the people that are, you know, working out there in Santa Barbara can really be a part of the solution. So I really want to echo, and this is, I think this is important. We echo what I heard from Mr. White. Let's reach out. I think that's what maybe Mr. Tyler was thinking about when he said "Blue Ribbon Panel" or something. But I believe that the community has a lot to offer here, you know, not just from being critical, but there are really knowledgeable people, a lot of retired, very competent folks that have been in their own industry and successful, that can really offer some good suggestions to us. And I hope that we have a suggestion box somewhere. We really open up the, you know, the channels for hearing from the community at large. And I, for one, am going to do my part. I'm going to sell as many sewing machines as I can over the next period of time and see how much sales tax we can generate for the city of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, did you have something else?
Do we need to do a straw poll, or do you need a motion to accept the other cuts or bifurcate the staff recommendation if you need us to delay?
My sense of the council in terms of the issue of the fire station is, is you would prefer that we hold off at least 30 days, and I'll talk with the fire chief, and we'll probably be coming back to you in two to three weeks and with some data, and then ask you for some direction on that one.
And do you need a motion on the other budgetary changes that you've suggested here today?
I don't think I need one. We can do them as long as I don't-
I don't think we're agendaized to take any votes, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Well, my only last editorial comment would be that I think some people misunderstand how a single-use bag fee works. People who are impacted economically can take a bag with them, and that's the reason why I prefer things that people can avoid, and it becomes a convenience charge more than it becomes something to hurt people. And it's not duplicative because typically if these ordinances are proposed, they're always done in a way where if the state eventually assesses a fee, and I've talked to the author and I, of that bill, Julia Bradley, an Assembly member, it's not likely to be able to pass this year in any case. But if it does pass, then it would cause you to, your one, to stop because you don't want a duplicative fee. Government, and you as the taxpayer, already spend basically about 17 cents, according to studies, on disposal of any single-use bag fee because, for a variety of reasons, disposal of waste, because, also because of what it does to our sorting machines and other problems associated with them. So, you know, a 10 or 15 cent one actually would be less than what it costs us to actually deal with the problem. And then I just think it's unrealistic to say that we can protect our public safety services without raising any kind of revenue. The share of our budget that comes from public safety should signal to us that unless we can stomach the kind of percentage cuts that are being shown to us today, that we need to think not only of cuts but of revenue. And I, for one, do not want to see the kind of impact, and I think dangerous impact, to the bottom line of safety in this community that would take place if we instituted these cuts fully.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss. And then I want to say something.
Please, okay, I'll be quick. Because I usually-
I agree with most of what folks have said here. I don't want to get into the bag debate right now, but there will be one when the time comes. I think it's pretty, not good for listeners, folks.
Put your mic on, please.
It would be helpful, wouldn't it? The other thing I would say was that this is sort of a wartime situation for us, and I think we all ought to view it that way and work together. And it's going to mean that in a sense, the public has to sacrifice, too. We can't just say, "Oh, the police, the fire, or the employees of the city." Really, if we have a reduction in services, we ought to try to step forward and be volunteers where we can, and if not, accept it and realize, "Okay, it's temporary, maybe, but it was great, maybe we'll get it back, but let's just go forward and try to produce as much revenue." And yeah, buy some more sewing machines. I mean, that's a great idea. Do some sewing and not, well, anyway. So, but I do think it is cause to be optimistic and not pessimistic. Everybody's up here talking about how awful it is, and yeah, you got to tighten your belt. Well, the other way to look at that is you lose weight. So in the future, it's going to be great, and let's just keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss. I didn't mean to cut you off. I appreciate that. I think you heard pretty much unanimous consensus here that we want to hold off on any brownouts starting Monday. So, and for me personally, that is a worst option, not the first option. So, and I appreciate the association, working with the fire chief. I know you have a very good relationship and to figure out how to meet that $400,000 gap if we're, actually, you have to do it now in three months and not in four months, so that's going to be a challenge. But I think it's a good conversation to have, and I think that shows the initiation of the start of everyone putting their best feet forward and doing everything we can to keep the service level to the level that it is and without as many cuts as possible. So this is, but this is going to be challenging. The, I did have a question, and it might relate to finding some funds for this fiscal year and into next fiscal year. A couple of years ago, when the voters voted in Measure G, and this, again, was the telecommunications, the telecommunications piece of our utility users' tax that we had to update. It was voted in as a general fund tax. And even though the rest of the utility users' tax is split in half between the general fund and the streets fund, this piece of it doesn't have to be that way. And I know last year, we looked into that in looking into the half that goes into the streets fund. Are there things that can, we can hold off on streets to move over in the general fund? Again, a one-time deal, but still maybe something to look into. And a year ago, when we were looking at the budget, it wasn't feasible because the state was looking to significantly raid transportation and streets funding and didn't. And then, you know, so there were some things going on. So I just ask, you don't have to answer now, but that might be something to look into between now and the end of this fiscal year. Are there projects that we didn't start that we don't need to start? Just like in Parks and Recreation Capital, there's some projects that we thought we were going to fund, and now we're not. And then again, moving forward into fiscal year 11 on the options list, I'd like to see that. The, it's a good point about, that Mr. Green brought up, about why are we putting a flat increase or a flat level for sales tax here when others are putting in 2% or more? I don't want to get in the position again where we're looking three times during the year of having to cut again because we thought we were conservative enough, and we weren't. The sales tax that we thought was 10% below the first quarter of this year, we projected 10% below the previous year, and it was almost 17%. I think it was to the tune of three-quarters of a million dollars. So we have to come back. I want to do a budget that gets us through the year without having to go back three or four times to try to relive the pain over and over again. So if that means being even more conservative than we've typically done in the past, that might hurt us, feel painful upfront, but I think in the long run will help us, especially because so many of the savings that we're looking at are one-time, and we're going to have to figure out how to overcome that in the future. Mr. Tyler had a good point in that, looking at back 12, 10 years ago, of the structure of the city. Do we need to have the organizational structure exactly the same way? Are there things that can be merged together? Most of the enterprise funds, we have to keep separate. We have, so that's not an option. But there are others. I mean, this is not a good option, none of them are good options, but the Downtown Parking Fund does not have to be an enterprise fund, you know? And I know everyone in the Downtown Parking Committee who's hearing this is freaking out because I bring it up, but if we're going to put all the options on the table, let's put all the options on the table and look at, you know, what does that really mean? The, on the revenue side, I think for me, it's not up to us whether or not to raise taxes. It's up to the voters. And there's certain rules on what it is a city council does to put something on the ballot, or even a group of citizens can put something on the ballot. We've seen that in the past before. So we can have the debate of whether or not it should pass at the ballot, but that's not really up to us to begin with. And so I just want to put that in perspective. And speaking of things on the ballot, the other one to look at in terms of how it might affect us in the city is the state budget. And there's still opportunities in the current state budget where our redevelopment agency funds, our street funds, gas tax, there are things that come to our city that we expect that is supposed to be local revenues that could be taken away from the city. So this projection is without any of that. And there is, there is an initiative being gathered around for signatures to put on November's ballot to keep local revenues local and to keep those secure, and that's another conversation we need to have. So in terms of looking at revenues for November, we don't know what the impact of that will be. We don't know what, if it will pass. So I don't think we should put it into a budget that should start July 1st because, and if it passes, something puts on the ballot and it gets passed and we see more revenue, fantastic. But I don't think we should count on that in terms of this particular budget, you know, between now and June 30th. So those are, those are my options, and I know this is one of my comments. Those are, this is one of very many work sessions. I agree with my colleagues that we want to hear from the community, and it'd be helpful for me personally, as opposed to saying, "Don't cut public safety," you know, broad-based. Be very specific. Is there something specific that we're currently doing that you might like but maybe could do without for a year? Or are there some things that you say, "Absolutely no way, no how, should we do X?" That kind of feedback would be really important, and I look forward to that. I do see the police chief. I do want to ask him, because it did come up, about staffing, because, and particularly in terms of patrol staffing- And particularly in terms of patrol staffing and how level or not level that's been. Because the last time we had a budget work session in November, we asked you to go higher and you did and we didn't get all the positions filled, but I do want to give you opportunity for that because I know that's of concern to the public.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council... Yes, we are continuing to hire. We have four in the academy as Mr. Samario mentioned before. We currently have seven vacancies that we're going to hold for less than the fiscal year. It's been a struggle, but currently, I just need the community to know that in terms of answering calls for service, we're there and our response times are pretty good because that's job one. And as we look at the future, we need to look at these positions that you saw up there that may have to go away in order to keep those calls for service and the community safe. And that's what we're going to do. It's... Crime, as one of you mentioned, is going up in several areas, particularly in some Part One crimes. Burglaries really hurt us in the last probably eighteen to twenty-four months. And we've been able to address a lot of that through a project that we're working to address some of those incidences, what I can say at this point. And it's working pretty positively. We did have an entry-level exam that HR ran for us about a month ago. We're continuing to interview individuals and have them on the gangplank just in case it works out. And it really is because of the fact that we have to have people ready to go because of the fact that from the time they get hired to the time they're actually out on their own is eighteen months. So we have to keep at least staying in the process of interviews, but not necessarily making job offers and holding those names out there in case good news happens. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't. But it's really important for the community to understand that at no time will we jeopardize their safety by going down on the patrol team side, which are the individuals who are answering their calls for service. If we have to do other things to keep us there, then that's exactly what we're going to do because again, that is job one.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments from the council? Mr. House?
Just, I didn't weigh in on the fire station thing. I think you got the sentiment right there, Mr. Armstrong. But also, you know, what it rose for me was, I heard a lot... I got a lot on my computer there, people concerned about it. And, okay, so we did a survey of response times, I think, of some sort that was pretty down and dirty, got some information. But we've done this before. We had a brownout of that station in the past. We also have information in the community of firefighters and you keep data. I'd like us to really take a look at citywide, our response times. I mean, really evaluate the system that we have for the long term. I mean, in other words, if we're going to make any decisions that have this kind of an impact on the community and have this kind of a strong reaction, they need to be really well-founded and really well-thought-out over, you know, with some really extensive study. Because if we needed to readjust our deployment in the community or, as we've done in the past, reposition some fire stations, I mean, I just don't know. I'm just saying that we should take a hard look at it and not just what we need to do for the immediate moment, but look at it for the long term. And I did want to say that. Do we have any plans to do that kind of evaluation of our system as a whole already? Have we already thought about taking... Re-looking at the way that we have our fire stations located in the community and the staffing for that?
Chief Tammy Hill?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House. We've been very fortunate in Santa Barbara to have an excellent coverage system with the seven stations and it was mentioned, they've been there since 1962. Our response times are excellent throughout the city. Our last response, over the past five years, we averaged a response time of about three minutes and thirteen seconds. That's an exceptional response time, but that's on an average. So we have not done a standards of coverage analysis. I think we've had the benefit of such excellent coverage and such an excellent system for so long that we really haven't looked with a microscope at how we do our business. So, been working with the association. We've crushed a lot of numbers in the last week. We have baseline data and I would like to utilize this, the challenge that we have right now, as an opportunity to look very closely at how we do our business. And I think I mentioned last May, that this was our contingency last May.
Right.
I mentioned back then that we might need to look very closely at what we do, which is mostly respond to medical emergencies, and then how we do it. And so we're at that point right now and we are working very hard on it and we have some good data right now, some new maps, and I'll be able to distribute those to council right after this meeting, as a matter of fact.
That's just great. You know, so that's what I'm talking about. If we're going to propose a change, it's really important that we've taken this opportunity and looked at it that comprehensively. And I really like the spirit of you're working together with the firefighters themselves. The other piece too, we've heard of other cities and again, we've evaluated this up and down over the years, but whether every time there's a medical emergency, a truck needs to roll out, you know, if it's an accident on the street. But I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think really deserve to be re-looked at in the larger and longer-term context. So I appreciate the work you're doing then.
And just lastly, I want to repeat what Chief Sanchez says, that public safety is our number-one priority. And working together with Firefighters Association, we really recognize that this is what we're here for. We're here for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I cut off Chief Sanchez. Was there something else you wanted to add?
Just a couple of quick things. If I go back to Councilmember Williams' question earlier about the annex, that is part of our strategy for the long terms. And we've met with Mr. Armstrong and discussed some of our strategies of not being there at all. For the last few months, we already are preparing to not be in that annex at all, even if it means squeezing everybody back to the building in front. So we've been working on that for quite a few months to save that. So that's been on the, kind of the front burner for quite a while. And had we not had this contract to December, we would have been out of it at this moment, but we couldn't do that. And also lastly, you know, the community will be impacted with several things that we do that they're used to us doing as a police department. Those are things that may have to go away in the long run. But again, reiterating the fact that the patrol strength is our number-one priority and investigating people's crimes. But it also goes to the fact of officer safety. You know, I need enough people out there in patrol, not just to answer the calls for service, which we're doing in less than six minutes for Priority Ones and investigating crimes and dealing with the gang issues, traffic issues, the issues in the corridor in the downtown area and in the parks and with our homeless mentally ill issues. Those are things that are still very important to us. And I know they're important to you and to Mr. Armstrong and to the community because they enjoy those types of services. And those are the types of things that we're going to have to really look at curtailing in order to continue the great response time. But also to have the officers work in safety with enough officers out there. And that's also job one, that they're safe. So I just wanted to just add that, but also get to Mr. Williams' question about the annex and other possibilities. We already in the process of literally last week measuring where we're going to put everybody come January 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong, did you have anything else?
No. That's... I think we've gotten enough of the sense of the council. And what I would expect is we'll come back to you probably mid-March in terms of follow-up on the fiscal year ten issues relating not only to the brownout but the other issues as well.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think this council is ready to tackle it and so we'll do that as of now. So, thank you very much for everyone for being here and for being patient. It's one of many meetings. This meeting's adjourned.